The one minute throws me. I'm sorry. You gotta wait till 7:16. I called this meeting to order. This is a city council meeting for the city of Emeryville. Before we call the roll, I need to have it reflected in the minute that a council member, Scott Donahue, will be participating via teleconference. The teleconference location was identified in the notice for this meeting, so you'll be able to hear him but not see him, and he can hear us. I don't think he can see us, that would be creepy, but he might be livestreaming us, so I don't know. Wave to Scott. All right, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Vouters?
Here.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Pats?
Here.
And Mayor Medina?
Here. All right. Scott, sorry, Councilmember Donahue, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Do you have a copy of the agenda?
Yes, I do.
Is it posted properly at your location, which is publicly accessible?
Yes, it is.
And are there any members of the public present at your location right now?
No, there are not.
Okay. Can everyone else hear Scott? Just fine. Fantastic. Let's commence the meeting business. Approval of the final agenda?
So moved.
Got a motion by Member Vouters and a second by Member Martinez. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Vouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats?
Aye.
And Mayor Medina?
Aye. All right. Any special orders of the day?
None.
Any commission or committee vacancies?
Other than the information about the June 18th meeting that's going to be happening for the, that you'll be doing your committee and vacancy appointments, that's about it.
Okay. Great. June 18th. Any councilmember special announcements or reports on meetings attended? Nope. Okay. City managers' report?
None. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Experté Communications?
Madam Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I spoke with representatives from SEIU 10 to 1, Alameda Labor Council, Building Trades and Construction Trades Council of Alameda County, and I received two emails from members of the public which are printed out and available for folks present.
Great. All of the same minus building trades for myself?
All the same minus building trades, and I've also spoken to the townhouse.
The emails.
Okay.
Mr. Member Donahue?
I just received emails from a member of the public and from a franchise restaurant.
Any public comment for consent agenda items or items not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing none, there's no consent agenda tonight, no public hearings, so we move on to 12.1, ordinance of the city of Emeryville, amending sections 5.37.01 and 5.37.02 of chapter 37 of Title V of the city of Emeryville municipal code with respect to the minimum wage for employees of small independent restaurants.
You want public comment?
I called it.
I didn't hear it. I have a comment I'd like to make.
You can make it at the next public comment time.
That's not tonight, correct?
What?
That's not tonight. For me, I have not on the agenda.
I just called it.
I didn't hear it. Can I make a comment?
You may make a comment.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's get it over with.
I was listening, but it wasn't very clear. So pardon me, I got laryngitis a little bit, which should make the four of you happy. Last time I was here, I mentioned how Councilmember Martinez had told everyone that Emeryville needs more housing, and she said this at the June 5th study session for the ONI project, where the five of you were discussing rolling back the family housing for the unit mix and also for the tower separation. You guys were talking about rolling that back, and I told everybody that Councilmember Martinez had said that she's sort of in favor of that project because it brings more housing, and Emeryville really needs more housing. And then in the last meeting, I mentioned that, and I asked Councilmember Martinez, how does she know that we need more housing? Because the documents we have says that we were supposed to go to 16,500 by 2029, and so how does Councilmember Martinez know that that's incorrect? And would you please tell us how many more housing, how much more housing we need so we can plan for it? And then Councilmember Martinez said that what I had said was incorrect, that she had never said that we need more housing. That's what, so I was accused essentially of lying. She didn't use the word lying, but she said, you know, that was inaccurate. So I'm sure Councilmember Martinez knows that these meetings are recorded, so here's Councilmember Martinez talking at that meeting about the ONI project.
One huge project that could employ a lot of people at fair wages and create a lot of housing in a time that we really needed.
Okay. So to Councilmember Martinez, you said that you didn't say that, so are you, first, well, actually, my only question is, are you denying that that is your voice? Now, as I sit down, the public should know that Councilmember Martinez is permitted to answer that question, you know, with a, not with a back and forth, but the Brown Act does provide her to answer that question. Is that your voice? If it is, then you stand corrected. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no more public comment for items not on tonight's agenda, let's move on to 12.1. Chad?
Madam Mayor, generally with the second reading, it's on consent, but because this is the only agenda item tonight, it is on the action calendar. We have a very brief overview of the ordinance that the council voted first reading on last week, and we can answer questions, but it's not going to be an extensive staff presentation, just a very brief overview.
Great.
That's correct. Yes. Madam Mayor, members of city council, Chad Smalley, Economic Development and Housing Manager, just want to highlight what this ordinance amendment that was adopted at first reading last week does. This does two things. One, creates a definition of a class of businesses called small independent restaurant, and this means an employer that's a small business and has 20 or fewer locations globally and not associated with a network of franchises that has more than 20 locations globally. The ordinance goes on, then, to establish the minimum wage rate for that class of employers, which beginning on July 1st of this year would be $15 an hour. That amount is approximately 92% less than the normal minimum wage rate for large businesses and other businesses that are not small independent restaurants. It then goes on to annually escalate by one percentage point of the large business minimum wage rate up until 2026, when it's at 99%, and then in 2027, it's 100%. Both wages are locked together. And what this does is, because the underlying wage rate that this is indexed to escalates with Consumer Price Index, it allows it to continue to raise and then merge in 2027. I'll take any questions you may have on this.
Any clarifying questions? Scott, any clarifying questions?
I have a couple.
No.
Okay. Can I say that?
So, a couple of quick questions. So, you mentioned that it becomes, it's at 15, by freezing it at 15 an hour, that's approximately 92%. What percentage is the small business rate currently compared to the large business rate?
At the top of my head, I don't have that figure. I would have to calculate it. Maybe you can, I can, I know it will be 92% from today versus tomorrow's 1630 minimum wage rate, but I don't, I don't have it right to hand off the top of my head.
It's 95.6%.
Okay.
Okay. And then, just so we're all clear, what is the Consumer Price Index this year for the Bay Area?
I have that right here. 3.9%.
3.9%. And is that the standard CPI, or is that the less volatile, one that excludes energy?
That is straight from the Bureau of Labor Statistics.
Yeah, but they report out too.
For the San Francisco, Oakland, Hayward area.
I'm sorry. So that, does that include food and energy, or is it exclusive of them?
For all items, urban consumers.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks. If there are no other clarifying questions, I will open it up for public comment. I've got two cards before me. I'll call those two people first, but you don't need a card to give public comment. First up, Ladonna Tolliver.
Thank you, Mayor Medina and everyone else for hearing my comments. I actually had submitted in case I couldn't make it here on time, but since I am here, I'm hoping that my comments still can be considered and that I don't have to reread it, but I just do want to ask that if you could really think about who are the franchisees for some of the franchises in Emeryville. We've been here for 10 years, and it's just my husband and myself, and we've been committed business owners ever since, and we've, you know, done everything we can to, you know, be fair to everyone and never had, you know, an issue of any kind. And when I look at how you define an independent restaurant, and when you say you exclude franchisees with 20 locations, you know, we're just a franchisee, like a licensee of the company we have our recipes from. We don't have 20 locations, it's just us. Our, you know, sales might not even equal some of the people who have been considered an independent restaurant. And we only, and the most we've ever had for a long time, have 15 employees. We want to keep those employees and raising it too much, and we already try to pay a little bit above the minimum as it is, so we can keep them, but if you raise it again, then we have to then try to keep some of the people we've had a long time, and it's going to be a really big burden on us. So I just ask if you can consider who is a small franchisee and maybe include us as an independent restaurant. Thank you.
Next up, Kate O'Hara.
Good evening, Council. I'm Kate O'Hara. I'm with Ebase East Bay Alliance for Sustainable Economy. We sent comments before the last council meeting on this, but wanted to have the opportunity to comment on this as well and to express our opposition to this proposal. As we stated in our letter from last week, that was signed on by a number of organizations that are working on issues related to low-wage workers, working with restaurant workers, and worked to raise the minimum wage here in Emeryville and in cities around the Bay Area. You know, this is a poorly developed policy based on a flawed study. This that was passed last week was, you know, brought out at the last minute without any discussion or review of what the impacts of this would be, and this process has been so rushed that none of the workers who will be directly impacted by not receiving the wage they were expecting to, the raise they were expecting to get in July have not been a part of this process. And so we continue to be opposed to this and think that it's bad for Emeryville workers and also bad for the region to have this precedent. I also just wanted to note that Trader Vixx, which is one of the businesses that has been included in this carve-out with the definition of 20 or more locations globally, as a quote-unquote "small local business," Trader Vixx has 19 locations around the world, including London, Tokyo, Atlanta, Dubai. They have 119 employees. It's very hard to understand how a company that large is needing to be a part of this carve-out or why they are considered a local small business. Thank you.
Judy Timmel?
So I have, I have two issues. One is fairness and one is timing. And in terms of fairness, I want to ask us all the questions. Number one, is it fair to balance the budget of a business on the backs of its lowest-paid workers? I say no. I think there are other ways that we can assist small businesses, and I am a huge supporter of small businesses, and I patronize them whenever I can. I don't want any of them to fail, but I feel that this has been a very one-sided process, taking money away from the workers. Is it fair to deny a pay increment that has been promised for years in a matter of a couple of weeks without real input from the workers? Number three, is it fair to lump Trader Vixx together with Jasmine Blossom Thai Restaurant in Emeryville? Absolutely not, in my view. Timing has been talked about by the previous speaker. Have you heard from any of the workers? Have they even had a chance to digest what's happening to them? This is a serious issue. A few, even a few cents can make a huge difference, and I think the timing has been done because of the July 1st date that's coming up, but let's slow it down and really hear from everyone involved. Thank you.
Okay. Any more public comment?
Good evening. I'm Marilyn Boucher, and my husband Wayne and I own The Broken Rack, and I'm also a member of the EDAC Committee, Economic Development Advisory Committee, and I just mentioned that because I hope you're aware that our May 15th meeting, regular meeting, our liaison, Christian Pats, wasn't able to be there, but those of us who were there, we had an extensive discussion of the previous proposed revision for, proposal for a pause, and the committee at that time voted unanimously to recommend approval of that. The next, the big point I want to make is, it's not about the rent. You know, the traditional budget for a restaurant is payroll no more than 30 to 33%. Cost of sales, the food and beverage, no more than 30 to 33%, and the rest for overhead, which of course includes rent, but it also includes utilities, marketing, equipment, maintenance and repairs, insurance, professional fees if you need a lawyer, office and janitorial supplies, and I'm sure many other things I haven't thought of. But my point is that rent, while it's a significant expense, is a much smaller percentage of a restaurant's budget than labor. We are a very labor-intensive business. And I believe Councilmember Pats made a reference to that the commercial rents have gone up approximately 33% or 34% over the time of the MWO, and he said that's about the increase in the minimum wage. Now, 33% is the increase in the minimum wage if you go to 1225 to 1630, but if you go just one day before that, 1225 went into effect, it's $9 to 1630, and that's an 81% increase in four years and one day. And when you talk about rising commercial rents, you're talking about new leases, and what we're really talking about here is trying to save existing local businesses. I don't know how old, the townhouse is much older than we are. We're 21 years old now. Can't Fail Cafe is a little less old than we are, and we are all in leases when this started, and our leases are adjusted, they're adjusted by the CPI index, the same one this is. And my rent increase from July 1, 2015 to July 1, 2019 is 7%. So that's a considerably smaller increase, and it is in fact in COLA. So I've also heard that said that if you can't accept this, what has been defined as a minimum wage and continuing business, you're not a sustainable business. Well, again, I'd like to talk, you know, point to the businesses that are bringing this issue. The townhouse, Rudy's Can't Fail, The Broken Rack.
That's your time.
I believe someone's willing to say. See, my time?
Okay.
We've been in here business a long time, and we weathered the dot-com burst, we weathered the great recession, and I think that's pretty good evidence that we had sustainable businesses. But due to this one change in the minimum wage, now many of us are thinking we're not sustainable businesses. I'd like to tell you a few things about my employees. Currently, we have 27 employees, and they, one of them lives in Emeryville. The others live in no particular order, San Pablo, Oakland, Berkeley, Crockett, Hercules, Richmond, Piedmont, Castro Valley, Alameda, Rodeo, and Pinole. So again, as has been mentioned, you are importing business, and what is the living wage? I've been quite clear whether you're trying to make a living wage for Emeryville or a living wage for where these workers actually live, because, you know, I suspect that they have a, they're not, I'm not arguing that they're not poor because they're low-wage employees, they are, but I think they are not in desperate shape. I also wanted to say and note that we have 14 employees who are earning the minimum wage now. Of those 14, 11 are tipped employees. Those tipped employees were earning more than 1630 per hour back in 2015 when this went into effect, and they're still earning more than 1630. I have another five employees that are at 16 right now. Those are in the kitchen and at the door. Those employees will now become minimum wage. It used to be there was always a gap between the back of the house and the other positions that were not tipped, but as the wage increases have gone forward, we haven't been able to keep everyone up, so there's been a compression. So in some ways, this minimum wage has increased the inequities in the restaurant earnings as they exist, because the people who were earning the most to begin with have received consistently larger-than-minimum-wage increases, and those that have not have fared much worse. My highest wage back then was $20. It's still my highest wage. Also, about the, I know that Council, Councilmember Donahue was very concerned about not giving a CPI increase this year. In the revised proposal, it's true that they would not, it would not, but look at the fact that these employees have received a greater-than-CPI increase in past years.
It's your time. Thank you. Next comment?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Andrea Malarki. I am the Alameda County co-chair of the COPE Committee for SEIU 10 to 1. I represent workers, and I've come here tonight specifically to represent workers because, as the last speaker said, she quote, "thinks they are not in desperate shape." And I guess my question to you is, do you know that? Have you talked to workers? Have you looked them in the eye and asked them what their rent is? Do you know what their living wage would be? It is a shame to me, a shame, that just in 2015, Emeryville set itself up as leaders in supporting working people. Most of you ran on the issue of minimum wage. Last week, you said, Councilmember Martinez, you said that you want to bring these two tracks together, that you stand with working people, and you believe in this, and you are here tonight to carve workers out of a planned wage increase. They've been planning for this. I don't know about you, but I believe that one job should be enough, and this carve-out is hurting poor people. People who make less than I do, people who make less than you do, and people who honestly work harder, that deserve the compensation. It's, it's really disappointing to me that you're planning to do this, that you're going back on your good reputation, that you're sullying sort of the Emeryville values, and minimum wages are good for the economy, that's regardless of the industry. If you're worried about small businesses, do something. I heard very clearly last week the will of the majority of the council to support small businesses. Go for it. Don't do it by punishing workers.
My name is Liz Ortega. I'm with the Alameda Labor Council, Executive Secretary of Treasury, representing 135,000 members in Alameda County, here to oppose once again this ordinance that's going to hurt a lot of workers, including, and I'm also not here just as a labor representative, I'm also here as a daughter of one of those back workers who had to struggle and work three jobs just to make sure that I could grow up in the Bay Area, and who can't wait until 2027 to make a decent wage, because their rent isn't going to wait, their healthcare isn't going to wait, the gas prices aren't going to wait. So once again, I'm going to oppose this ordinance as both the head of the Labor Council and as a daughter of one of those workers who worked in the back washing dishes. I'm also here to say that starting tomorrow, we're going to start collecting signatures to overturn your decision and take it to the voters, because they want a minimum wage.
Any additional public comment on this item? Come on up.
Hello. My name is Eric Hanson. I'm the owner of Mummy's Cafe. It's on the corner of Powell and Hollis. I'm a new business owner. It's my first-ever business. I'm here to speak in favor of the amendment. I'm trying to build a business not on the back of any of my workers, all of whom are generally part-time and go to school and other things like that. I collect credit card tips and pay them. They're effectively making between $21 and $22 an hour already. Goes in the paycheck, and then we all pay taxes on that, and it's not the base wage so much. I'm learning a lot about businesses, a first-time business owner, but one of the things I've learned is, it's not the base wage so much that is the issue, but the taxes that paid, the pay on top of that. So once, once they receive their salary, that's the base wage, plus the tips, about it, there's an extra third that I could build for in taxes on top of that. And so it just, it all multiplies the other things that you've heard from other business owners. The lack of parking definitely hurts where my location is, and, you know, I'm sensitive to, issues have been raised about workers, but I think that it's casting business owners in contrast to the workers, and I think in a monolithic light that doesn't reflect all this. If we're talking about independent businesses that are trying to be something unique in the food service industry in Emeryville, then I think I would support this amendment and give time to those businesses to make the adjustments they need to so they can be successful and survive. Thank you.
Any additional public comment on this item?
My name is Zima Tolliver from Wingstock. If you guys doing a set aside because the small businesses are having, restaurants are having trouble making it, it's the same with us, you know? We're having that same problem. We're not independent. We got franchisees. We're a franchisee, but, you know, we pay, if we're independent, we'd make more money because we wouldn't have to pay out the franchisor, the money we ought to pay them every month. So it's like, you guys are looking at that like, oh, they need help, so we're going to do something about that, which I commend you, but it's also people like us that, you know, we're having the same issue. That's all.
Thank you. Any more public comment? All right. Come on up. If you think you're going to give public comment, you can make your way up in advance as well.
Hi. My name is John. I can have a small manufacturing company called The Suspender Factory. We make suspenders, and we compete with China and Mexico and inexpensive imports, and basically the, I started the business about 40 years ago, and I never had a problem with minimum wage. I was always in favor of it. I said, costs are increasing, we have to pay more money, and it was never a problem. However, when the discussion started, you know, at the time, the minimum wage was $9.25, and then it quickly increased to $15, and now possibly to $1630, plus, you know, paid sick days and so on, et cetera, it becomes like a 65%, you know, increase, which is very difficult to digest. So when the discussion started, we had 64 employees, and now we have 42 employees. Said at the end of the year, if it goes to $16, we have zero employees. So basically, the other thing that I want to mention, it's always the burden on the employer, right? The, you know, the duty is on the employer. When I started the business, it was very easy to fix, you know, sewing machines or get a technician and so on, et cetera. Nowadays, it's almost impossible to get a technician to fix your sewing machine. Nobody knows anything. It's a total disaster. There is no request to improve anything on the employee's side. The burden is always laid on the, on the employer's side. And I've grown, I've grown up in socialist country, in Czech Republic, and this is what happened. When the majority decided, okay, then basically the country went down the tube. So basically, you, the city council should listen to the majority, but make a rule. If you, if you decide that the majority, but make a rule. If you, if you decide that the business owner's decision is not the last decision, you will have no businesses, guaranteed. That's how Eastern Europe went belly-up. That's how Russia went belly-up, that Cuba going, you know, the way it went. And then we have Venezuela. So you can decide. If you remove the incentive of having an only business, you will have no businesses. And thank you very much.
Oh, no. Socialism. Guess the previous speaker doesn't like roads and libraries and fire departments. And then I guess he also mentioned the specter of Leninism. So if we don't roll back the minimum wage, Lenin will like rise up out of his grave, I guess.
But I can still talk Lenin.
Could you drop the gavel, please?
Sir, you need to not interrupt his public comment. Brian, please. No, no, sir, you may not continue. Your time is up. Brian, please continue. Well, your time's been reset.
Presume he stopped the clock. Okay. Okay. Pardon me about the laryngitis. I would like to talk about something that no one has talked about here. In a little over two years, the state of California is going to have a fifteen-dollar statewide minimum wage of fifteen dollars. Pardon me. That means in Alturas, California, where a one-bedroom apartment is, you can easily get one for four hundred dollars, the restaurant workers there are gonna make the same as in Emeryville. If you go to closer by, go to Fairfield, California, it's close by, restaurant workers there are gonna earn the same as Emeryville restaurant workers, and their rent there for a one-bedroom is about twelve hundred dollars versus Emeryville, which is about thirty-two, over three thousand for a nice one-bedroom apartment. The point is that why are working poor people, working poor families going to stay here in and around Emeryville if they can have a much better life in Alturas, or Fresno, or Fairfield? And the answer is no, they're not gonna stay here. They're going to move, of course. What, you know, they can't afford three thousand, and you just removed any chance that they could, or you will tonight if you overturn the minimum wage ordinance. So basically, what you're really, what this really is, is let's get rid of working poor families in our community. Because that's gonna be the net effect of this, if you overturn this. I mean, there's no, there's no denying that. I wanted to mention that also that the city council talked some smack about talking to workers about, before making up your minds. And that didn't happen. You talked to businesses for almost a year about this, that with, from the survey all the way till now, it's been rolling out the red carpet for businesses. You haven't talked to labor, labor, working poor, working poor families. But I'm just here to announce that I will talk to working poor families in Emeryville. And I have, I write a news blog about Emeryville. It's called The Emeryville Tattler, and you can Google it. It's Emeryville Tattler. And I'm going to do a series after you, this action tonight. I'm gonna start talking to working poor families that work in restaurants in Emeryville. And I'm gonna find out, since you couldn't be bothered to do it, I'm gonna find out how, what their life is like now, now that you've taken away their raise, that they're expecting, by the way, on July 1st. Who knows? Some of them might have taken out loans, expecting to get their raise, and now you're snatching that away from them tonight. But rest assured, if anybody in Emeryville wants to know what these workers think, read The Tattler. Thank you.
Any additional public comment?
I should have been more prepared. My name is Damon Stanbrook. I own Pickin' the Pickle Barbecue in Emeryville. I'm a fairly new business to Emeryville, about six months. I've owned restaurants elsewhere as well. I still own. I'm obviously a business owner. I'm extremely pro-labor as well. Started out cooking twenty-six years ago for six dollars an hour. I have worked my tail off for twenty-six years to own my own businesses. I need to provide for my family as well as for my labor. Very few of my employees have ever made minimum wage. That being said, this pause in my mind is good. It is too quick an adjustment, California-wide. That's why they're slowing it down. I'm the guy that did it, coming from nothing, and I certainly take care of my employees. I know I do speak to my employees. Unlike, you know, a guy behind us saying, it's all about the owners. I talk to my labor. I know who my cooks are, I know their families, I know their kids' birthdays, I know everything about them. I have guys who worked for me for years and years and years. Part of my family, we do holidays together. But if we rush into things, I think there needs to be more discussion on both sides, honestly. I don't think, like, I can't afford to take a loss on this. My family, I feed my kids on this business. So it's not just labor, it's owners as well. Not every owner, you know, walked in here with a silver spoon and just opened up a big company. I did it on my back. So when you talk about labor on our backs, yes, I'm the labor on the back. Now I own the business. So I think the discussion needs to be a little bit more serious on both sides. We're not gonna get anywhere just pitting labor against owners. It's gonna end up a disaster. Like a few people said, labor's gonna get cut, restaurants are gonna close. It's already happening. It's happening in Seattle. It's happening in San Francisco. It will happen here. And the labor side, they're right as well. Labor will leave. They'll go other places. So it's not a one-size-fits-all solution. It needs to be looked at a little bit more comprehensively. Sorry, I should have thought of my thoughts a little bit better, but I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Any additional public comment? All right then. Public comment's closed, and we'll move into discussion. Start with Vice Mayor Patz.
Sure. So I've been struggling with this, both the speed and the negative impacts. And so I have visuals today. So bear with me one moment here. I'm gonna talk a little bit. My first visual is not super, well, I always like to keep people in mind. And so we're gonna talk a little bit about people, but I'm gonna get into numbers. My preference is to talk about stories and to talk about people. And tonight, I feel we have to really argue about the numbers because that's what this comes down to. But I want to address a couple of the public comments. You know, the state decided very early on that when we set a minimum wage, it's the same for everybody, front of the house, tipped employees, back of the house. And I think part of that reasoning is when you look at who's in the back of the house versus who's in the front of the house, generally, it's language skills, it's criminal record, and those are the things that get you in the front versus being in the back. So I just wanna say that that was on my mind as people were talking. I've heard several times that the increase is too quick. I think this discussion is too quick. We should have had a serious conversation. It happened in the beginning. I'm gonna take a little history really quickly and go back. You know, the value of the minimum wage, when it started, it was one of the things that ended the Great Depression. It was an idea of bringing in some value to labor. It's a New Deal policy. And it quickly accelerated. It was not something that started and stayed flat. It went up in giant jumps. The problem is that it hasn't kept up with inflation. So the top line represents value in twenty-twelve dollars, purchasing power of the money. The bottom line represents what the wage is. And you can see the purchasing power has gone down and down. And so now the minimum wage and its purchasing power are at the lowest level for a long time. In the sixties, it peaked. So this is why we got to the idea of raising it to fifteen dollars an hour. And this idea comes back from 2013, 2014. Emeryville got on board and passed the ordinance in 2015, if you'll go ahead. And so this is Emeryville's numbers. These are the small business wage increases. In 2013, the state wage was eight dollars an hour, ended and raised it up to nine dollars. That's where I'm getting the twelve-and-a-half percent increase. That was the state increasing it by a dollar. In 2015, Emeryville passed its minimum wage ordinance, and we went a thirty-one, thirty-six percent increase in the minimum wage for small businesses. Okay? So this idea that we're passing an eight percent wage increase now tells me something, you know? And it went up every year thereafter as we approached fifteen dollars. And I want to clarify, that was money in 2015 that we thought was a reasonable wage for people to get by on, was fifteen dollars an hour. It's a nice round number. It makes for a great slogan, but it's out of date, which is why the council, in all their brilliance, said, let's not freeze it at fifteen dollars an hour. Let's make sure that the wage changes over time to reflect purchasing power because a stagnant wage is a pay cut. So this idea that we're going up, sorry, that's fine, going up eight percent is not a giant leap. It is consistent with the seven percent leaps we've had in the past. And as I asked Chad earlier, right now, we're at fifteen versus fifteen sixty-nine, which means that small business work employees are getting ninety-five percent of what the minimum wage should be in Emeryville, which is fifteen sixty-nine, based on the Consumer Price Index. Okay? I found it at four percent, three-point-eight for the CPI. We're close enough. Okay? So next year, by keeping the minimum wage at fifteen dollars an hour, they're only gonna get ninety-two percent of what the city council determined was a fair wage to get by in Emeryville of sixteen dollars and thirty cents an hour. That is the CPI-adjusted wage from when we thought fifteen was enough, and it's gone up, okay? So by freezing the minimum wage next year, workers are gonna get the equivalent of an eight percent pay cut of what they should be doing, okay? But in real numbers, that's a dollar thirty an hour for a full-time employee is two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a month, twenty-seven-hundred dollars a year. Now, in the last year, sorry, I get emotional on these things. In the last year, I thought, well, what's gone up? Food, energy, housing, medication. CDE will tell, CDC will tell you that type-two diabetes is more prevalent along, among low-wage workers. And it was a nice, easy statistic. I looked up what's the most commonly prescribed medications. And there's several different ones, but insulin and diabetes care comes up a lot. Go ahead. A vial of insulin, once you open it, lasts twenty-eight days, one month. From last year to this year, the three most popular insulin medications went up two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and a hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars per vial of insulin. There's a real cost that lines up perfectly with the pay differential we're talking about for minimum wage workers. This is not something that's just zero impact. This actually is real-world dollars that are coming out of people's pockets. If we had been thoughtful about this, we wouldn't start at ninety-three percent. We would have done a cost-of-living increase. If we'd had more than thirty seconds to sort of look at this, we could have talked about the percentage differences. We should have been starting next year at ninety-five percent of the CPI-adjusted wage. But that ship sailed, you know? I love the story of getting yourself out of it. We talk about this all the time. Oh, the way out of poverty is to work harder. But if we keep setting the minimum wage at an untenable rate, people are driving further, paying more gas, people are finding cheaper rents, which push up all their costs, people are having to decide between food and medicine. I hear that this is gonna make small businesses struggle. I get that. We've talked quite eloquently about the differences in labor in back in the day and labor today. What I didn't get into is productivity increases over time, and I don't think, I don't want to waste my time on that. I want to end with, this is a pay cut, plain and simple. We are paying people ninety-five percent this year in small businesses of what the minimum wage should be, based on very smart math from five years ago. And next year, we're planning on paying them ninety-two percent, ninety-three percent of what the minimum wage should be, based on some very smart math, all in a rush, for an increase that people say, oh, it's so large. It fits very nicely with historic increases. Federal increases are even much larger. It's not unusual to have giant increases in the federal minimum wage. I'm gonna stop there.
Okay. Councilmember Donahue?
I think that the overall increase that will happen at fifteen, starting in 2020, will be greater than the cost of living in the following years. These workers who are not rising to the full jump still will, in the next seven years, be having increases at a rate higher than the cost of living over that period of time. And I think that the aspect of our city that we have to think about is our hotels have, a lot of people come, do business, Monday through Friday especially, they want to sit down restaurant. If we increase the minimum wage to sixteen thirty, I think we're gonna potentially be in trouble with our hotel clientele because we're gonna lose some of those restaurants. And I just think that what we're doing, we're making a subclass, but that subclass is still going to be well within the Bay Area average for minimum wage, the higher end of it, and will be higher than the other cities in a few years. That's all I can say.
Member Martinez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't actually have any comments beyond what I stated last week.
Member Batters?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, only briefly, which is just to say that contrary to some of the comments made at public comment, a merge will still happen for these wages. It simply has a longer trajectory than was originally planned in 2015 to allow for adjustments that couldn't have been contemplated in 2015 due to the fact that this was a novel approach. And the only thing I really sincerely do regret and agree with Councilmember Patz wholeheartedly on is that for far too long, wages have been held back for working people. And so now we find ourselves in a really unfortunate place where small businesses, which I believe are working people, and the people who work for them, are pitted against one another. And so the purpose of this very narrow-defined group has been to ensure that as many people as possible can be lifted up without harming the investment in the labor and toil that small business owners have put in and the, and the work that they have done as working people to create an opportunity for themselves and others. I would also note that workers will continue to receive increases, and that what we're really looking at here is balancing, preserving jobs, which I think is the goal for everybody, and balancing the need for those jobs against the need to ensure that working people have a livable wage. I have no further comment.
Thank you. Yeah, I think as a city, we have five council members who all want to ensure that we have vibrant, locally-serving business community, and also ensure that working people have basic protections. Our track record on this has been raising the minimum wage, passing a Fair Work Week ordinance, offering paid sick leave to Emeryville workers, in addition to passing a affordable housing bond to the two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars, passing tenant protections, looking at transportation and housing, and social justice issues that deeply affect low-wage workers. There's, there's a lot we are doing to try to close the wealth gap in this economy. And, you know, it's, this is not like a pro-business versus anti-worker split in the council. This is a difference on methodology. I fully understand that small businesses are asking for support, and as last week I stated, I think there's other things we can look at. My vote's gonna remain the same this time, but I appreciate the respect and concern that everyone has brought to this issue here tonight.
So, I'm sorry, I want a point of clarification here. I've heard several members, including yourself, Madam Mayor, say, this is about small businesses. And I think Member Donahue put it quite eloquently. This is not about small businesses. This does not impact all small businesses. This is about restaurants. We want local-serving restaurants, and so that's the carve-out that we're making. We're not saying, oh, it's about small business. And I just want to make sure we're clear on that point, that this isn't about helping, you know, the, your business is excluded from this. You're not a restaurant. Your wage is going up to sixteen forty. Sixteen thirty, sorry. You know, so I just want to clarify that.
Thanks for that clarification. Is there any further comment, either in the room or from Member Donahue?
Uh, no.
Okay. Is there a motion? Okay. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll?
Point of clarification. Do you want a motion to read by title only, or do we not have to do that?
No, we don't have to do it again.
No, you don't need a motion to read, or you don't need a read by title only on the second reading.
Michael Safe.
Cool.
Councilmember Batters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats?
No.
And Mayor Medina?
No. Okay, motion passes. Department head reports? Nope, nothing. All right, any future agenda item requests from council? Yes, Member Batters?
I have one item, Madam Mayor. We have our, on June 4th, our first council meeting in June, we generally do our Pride resolution. And I would like to ask if council would be supportive of instructing staff for that resolution to make it both a continuing resolution and also to allow for the additional condition of a second pride flag to be hung at City Hall for a short period of time in the city.
I support that request.
What is a continuing resolution?
Meaning that every June it would be hung. We don't have to do it every year.
Yes. Member Donahue? Did you catch that, Member Donahue? Are you still there?
Yes.
Okay. So you support this as a future agenda item? Is that the yes, or yes that you're still here?
Uh, yeah, that's okay, to have that on the agenda.
Okay. Okay. Any other future agenda item requests?
So, oh.
Yeah, go for it.
So with respect to that request, Madam Mayor, then we would republish, because that's for next Tuesday, the 4th, we would republish the June 4th agenda with that new item this week. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, the meeting is adjourned at 8:00 or 7:00 p.m.